Good evening, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, July 1st, 2020. I would like to provide virtual planning and zoning meeting.
I think. This Commissioner Barnes, yeah, okay. Due to the impact of COVID-19 pandemic, the city is taking steps to ensure the health and safety of our community and our employees. As a result, attendance in person by members of the public will be prohibited. Instead, we have invited the public to submit comments via email, and staff will read them during this meeting. In addition, this meeting is being livestreamed on Facebook, which is accessible for all members of the public, even if they do not have a Facebook account. The email address, publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov, has been set up for the public to send in their comments for the meeting. Again, it's publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov. That's P-U-B-L-I-C-C-O-M-M-E-N-T-S at goodyear, G-O-O-D-Y-E-A-R-A-Z dot gov. Staff is monitoring the email and will read any comments received for each item according to the three-minute limit. Commissioners, please move your microphones and be aware of the video during presentations to avoid interruptions. All votes will be taken by a roll call vote, and I will call on each commissioner for questions at the appropriate time during the hearing. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ellison is present, Commissioner Clymer is present, Commissioner Kish is present, Commissioner Steiner is present, Commissioner Maloney is present, Vice Chairman Barnes is present, Chairman Bray is present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, and thank you all for joining us this evening. Right into business, item number one is the approval of the draft minutes of Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on June 10th, 2020.
Commissioner Stein.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from June 10th, 2020?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from the past meeting.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Clymer, seconded by Commissioner Maloney, to approve the minutes from June 10th, 2020. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will please, will you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Maloney?
Approved.
Commissioner Steiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Kish?
Yes.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Barnes?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Now is the time for the citizens to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items. Again, you can turn in speakers' cards at publiccomments@goodyearaz.gov. Are there any cards on your end, Alyssa?
I have not received any comments or speaker card.
Thank you. We'll move on to disclosure of ex parte communications. This is the appropriate time for a commission member to disclose any ex parte communications they may have had prior to this meeting on any agenda items. Will you please go through the list, Alyssa, of the commissioners?
Commissioner Maloney?
No.
Commissioner Steiner?
No.
Commissioner Kish?
No.
Commissioner Clymer?
No.
Commissioner Ellison?
No.
Vice Chairman Barnes?
No.
Chairman Bray? Thank you. Chairman Bray, you've muted yourself.
Thank you. Onto the public hearing portion of tonight's agenda, and we will jump into Agenda Item Number Two. This is the Hancock Communities at Canyon Trails PAD Amendment. I'll open the public hearing, and it looks like Alex will be presenting on this evening's PAD.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Let me just get my slide. This item is a request to rezone property located at the southwest corner of Van Buren and Loop 303. This will look familiar to you. It was presented to you earlier this year, but staff is bringing back to you for, there was some additional information provided based on the public feedback, which I'll go through further in my presentation. So in 2018, the council approved the request for the Christopher Todd Communities at Canyon Trails PAD, which is this area in purple. The request tonight is to expand the PAD boundary south to Lilac Street. The southern portion is still a part of the Canyon Trails PAD and designated for Courthouse product. The applicant is requesting the amendment, which includes essentially three items. One is to extend that PAD like I mentioned. Two is to rename the PAD to reflect the current owner, that's Hancock Communities. And the third is to incorporate design guidelines per the request, or the recent guidance from City Council on the single-story multifamily product. The development standards of the PAD are not being proposed to change at all, but as I mentioned, the design guidelines are what are being proposed for changing. And that includes two elevations, which for each elevation, three color palettes will be required. The applicant did request a deviance from the city's current noise standards in order to follow ADOT's noise standards. This is a slight deviation of 3 decibels, which the difference between the cities and ADOT's would require a 14-foot wall between the property and the 303, and an 8-foot wall between the property and the 303. Staff does recommend approval of this in order to prevent that tunnel feel along the 303 and preserve the neighborhood feel of the project. This is the conceptual site plan for the southern portion. There is proposed entry and exit on both Lilac and 173rd Avenue. The concern that we did hear from the residents was based on the condition of the existing wall that would separate the two properties. Once we heard additional feedback, we wanted to look further into the issue, so the applicant worked with staff. The city selected a third-party engineering firm, which was Michael Baker, to do a wall study on the existing wall. The wall study was provided in your packet and published to the city's website. We received that on June 12th. It did state that the wall was in good condition, and staff finds that the recommendation is good to move forward. Overall, this is an infill project on an odd-shaped parcel, so staff does find the use as a, or does recommend the proposed use. The general feedback from the, from the public was positive and the, for the use of a single-story multifamily product, aside from the wall situation, which we do believe we've addressed. And that concludes my presentation. I apologize, I was preparing for council meetings, so I left your guys' note of commission. So that concludes my presentation. The applicant is on the phone and will be able to present if you'd like as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Appreciate that. At this time, let's go to the applicant, does the applicant wish to?
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, I couldn't hear. This is Paul Gilbert. I'm representing the applicant. With me is Andy Jokums, a planner in my office. You'll be pleased to hear, we intend to make a very brief presentation this evening. You basically heard and approved this case recently by a vote of four to two. The neighbors did not challenge the zoning use. The only issue was the condition of the adjacent wall, as pointed out by your staff. We worked with the city and paid for an independent consulting company engineer, Michael Baker. He went to the site, and his report is in your file, and basically he concludes that the wall is in a safe condition. We have also agreed, because of one of the comments in the report, to make sure that we place the soil against the wall so it is level with the adjacent single-family. We're consistent with the general plan, and we have a staff recommendation for approval. That concludes my presentation. Andy and I will be happy to answer any further questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. At this time, let's go through the commissioners and see if there's any questions either for staff or the applicant on this project. Let's go ahead, we'll just start with Vice Chairman Barnes.
No questions.
Commissioner Clymer?
None.
Commissioner Kish? No questions. Commissioner Ellison?
No questions.
Commissioner Maloney?
No questions.
Commissioner Steiner?
No questions.
Oh, you did. Making this easy. Alyssa, do we have any comments from the public or any emails that we need to be aware of?
I have not received any emails or speaker cards from the public.
Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we pass 19-210-00006.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Maloney, I believe that was seconded by Commissioner Ellison, to approve the Hancock Communities at Canyon Trails PAD amendment. Is there any discussion?
No.
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 Hearing none, Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Maloney?
Approved.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Barnes?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Onto Agenda Item Number Three, this is a use permit for the drive-through restaurant Starbucks at Litchfield Road and I-10. I will open the public hearing, and again, Alex will present this case to us.
Thank you again, Chairman. My next item is a use permit, as you mentioned, for a drive-through use, currently proposed for a Starbucks use. The property is located at the southeast corner of Litchfield Road and Interstate 10, just north of the existing Rudy's BBQ. The parcel is this flag-shaped piece. My next slide will show you the proposed site plan. The zoning ordinance does require a use permit for convenience uses, which does include the drive-through restaurants. So the property is proposed to be split into two pieces, one being the drive-through pad and the other a future, probably automotive use. The flow of the drive-through is shown in red, and then Rudy's would be to the south, Service King to the east. The staff does recommend approval. It does meet all the requirements of the zoning ordinance and engineering design standards. All public notification requirements have been satisfied, and staff does recommend approval. That concludes my presentation and can answer any questions. Near on mute.
Sorry. Thank you, Alex. We'll move on then to the applicant. Does the applicant wish to address the commission?
Evening Commissioners, this is Nathan Cutrell with KDS, we're the, representing the applicant with the civil engineers. Don't have much to state here, but we have been working well with Alex on the, the site. We're in agreement with everything she's requiring, requesting. We think this site will be a perfect location for the drive-through restaurant, convenient access to I-10 and Litchfield Road. I look forward to having it in there and filling in the last spot in that small development there. I am available for questions if you have any.
Sorry, Alyssa. All right, with that, are there any questions from any of the commissioners, either for the applicant or staff?
No.
No.
No questions.
No.
No.
Okay, with that, Alyssa, do you, are there any emails or public comments on this particular issue?
I have not received any emails or speaker card.
Thank you, and so with that, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve 20-300-00002 for the Starbucks drive-through.
I second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Clymer, seconded by Commissioner Maloney, to approve the Starbucks drive-through. Is there any? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Barnes?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Onto Agenda Item Number Four, this is the future permit. With that, I will present this committee, open the hearing.
Sorry, I'm trying to get my technology in order. I'm not as quick as Alex. Is it showing the presentation?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so you may be wondering why I'm presenting, and I am going to present, be presenting some of the staff cases so that at council meetings, we can reduce the number of staff members. Karen Craver did work on this project, and she is on, in case you have any questions that I'm not able to answer. This is a request for a use permit for a drive-through use. The property is located at Estrella Parkway and Roosevelt Street. It's just north of the Aldi Grocery Store that's currently under construction. It's also adjacent to the curve at Estrella Commons, which the commission just reviewed last meeting. This is a pad site to the Aldi Grocery Store. It will share its access with the Aldi site. There is, the drive-through lane is on the north and west side. The drive menu board does face the west, and it faces the Estrella Parkway. The entrance faces east to the parking field. There is also an outdoor dining component to the south of the building. Elevations were provided for the building, which you can see here. They do match in color and style to the Aldi Grocery Store, which you can see here. You can see how the roof line mimics the Aldi Grocery Store roof line, and the colors and materials are compatible. As I mentioned previously, the pickup window does face the Arturo roadway, which is not permitted unless there is significant screening. A canopy and metal screen wall has been provided to screen the pickup window from Estrella Parkway, and there will also be landscaping. The request meets all the conditions of the zoning ordinance for granting a use permit. We have not received any objections from the public, and staff recommends approval of the use permit and asks that commission recommends approval subject to the stipulations. That concludes my presentation, and I do believe the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Katie, for presenting that. Let's go ahead. If the applicant wishes to address the commission, let's move on to the applicant at this point.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. You got Jake Palmer here with Accelerated Development Services. We are the applicant on behalf of Aldi Arizona LLC, and we currently have this property under contract with Aldi. And I've also got two of our consultants on, not on the line, but watching remotely, so if I need to bring them in. We've got Neil Feizer with Robert Koopcheck and Associates, and we got Brian Wright with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. And we are, I'll make this short and sweet here. We are in agreement with the stipulations that staff had stipulated here, and, you know, we've spent a lot of time redesigning this, the elevations on this project. We've come back and forth with Karen, and they've been great to work with, and we've provided significant buffering, as Katie mentioned previously, on Estrella Parkway. And we think that this creates an integrated development with the Aldi Center, and it'll be something that'll definitely be an asset to the, the community and the trade area. So I don't think there's much more to add. We're definitely in compliance with the zoning ordinance. And that's all I got right now.
Thank you for joining us. Appreciate you taking time to do that. At this time, is there any questions from any of the commissioners, either for the applicant or for staff?
No.
No.
No. All right, hearing, no questions. Alice, is there, are there any speakers' cards or emails?
I have not received any emails or speaker card.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing, and I would ask for a motion on Agenda Item Number Four.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve 20-300-0001.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Commissioner Steiner, seconded by Commissioner Ellison. Please.
Commissioner Maloney? Is she? You're on mute, Catherine. Still on mute.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Barnes? Might be on mute. Looks like we might have lost him, okay. And Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Five, this is a zoning ordinance text amendment. I will open the public hearing, and Katie is going to present on this one as well.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the commission. Do you have a slide presentation? So before you tonight is this first zoning ordinance text amendment. We're referencing as the historic Goodyear text amendments, because their primary purpose is to modify regulations pertaining to specific needs of the historic Goodyear and other older neighborhoods. The amendment proposes two main topics and amending three articles in the zoning ordinance. The one item is chain-link fences, and the other one is projections into yards. We will also amend Article Two to add or modify any definitions needed for those two subject areas. So the regulations we're going to discuss tonight will impact subdivisions built before 1975. It impacts the historic Goodyear neighborhood, also Litchfield Manor, as well as a portion of North subdivision. A portion of North subdivision was built in the late 1990s, but portions of it were built in the 1970s. So historic Goodyear was built some time ago, as we just stated, before 1975. And so the houses reflect that period of design. Most of the houses were built with a one-car garage. Since they were built, many of those one-car garages have been converted to living space, leaving the homes with no garage. Today's standards require two covered parking spaces for all new homes built. So these homes do not meet the current zoning ordinance. They'd be considered legal, non-conforming uses. However, this can pose a problem for the residents because it is challenging them, for them to provide covered parking if they want to build a carport due to setback regulations. And here's just a couple pictures from around historic Goodyear, demonstrating the range of what we see out there. The top picture showing some of the less-than-desirable conditions out there, where there have been TARP carports placed out there, all the way to the bottom picture, where they have an integrated carport that matches the design of the existing structure. Now, even though that bottom picture looks very nice, this is an aerial photo of that same house, that carport is only setback seven feet. The zoning ordinance requires a 10-foot setback to livable areas of a house and a 20-foot setback to front-facing garage or carports. This blue line is the property line, and so as you can see, it's very challenging for these homes to be able to provide a covered park, a carport and meet that setback. This means these homes can't improve their property. They can't provide covered parking, get cars off the street. They can't convert their garages because then they don't meet the covered parking requirement we have in the zoning ordinance. And then the other problem that comes up from this is that because they don't meet zoning regulations, a building permit wouldn't be approved for these, so the ones that are out there today are often built without a building permit. What's being proposed is to modify exceptions for projections and allow certain projections into the front yard setback so that carports can be built in this neighborhood. The carport would need to be setback at least three feet from the property line. It could be a maximum of 12 feet in height. It's only for the storage of vehicles, so you can't build a carport to store materials. You cannot enclose this structure. It would have to be, remain open, as the picture shows. It would have to remain open, as the picture shows, and it would need to meet minimum design guidelines. The benefit of this change is it would allow for the existing conditions in the neighborhood to gain conforming status. It would allow residents to improve their homes by building carports that meet these guidelines, and it would allow us to issue building permits for these, so that we can ensure that carports are built to our building codes. So the second topic is chain link fencing. And again, here's a couple pictures from the Historic Goodyear neighborhood. So in today's zoning ordinance, we do not allow chain link fencing in residential neighborhoods. However, there was existing chain link fencing in Historic Goodyear, so again, that's a legal non-conforming status. As you can see, some of these areas, the chain link fencing has fallen into disrepair. Also, as you can see, we do require that any storage of materials be screened from view, and we have received code complaints in certain areas where you can see storage into the backyard. However, it can be very challenging for residents to address this, because the chain link fencing isn't allowed, which means those slats into the chain link fencing is also not allowed. So what we're proposing is to allow chain link fencing in these older neighborhoods. It would allow it in these older subdivisions built before 1975, and will also allow chain link fencing in our agricultural or AG and our agricultural urban districts, too. There is chain link fencing often existing in these areas, and because of their agricultural nature, it can make sense to allow them. So we're hoping that the chain link fencing can look more like this picture in some of those areas, because the chain link fencing would be allowed, and then it could be used as an option to screen storage of materials in these neighborhoods. There is one more item that we're, since we're opening up the walls and fencing section of the zoning ordinance, we have had an issue a few times where walls have been built very close together, and here's a photo showing an example where the walls are very close together. This can cause a concern that animals or garbage can get stuck back there, or possibly even kids could get back there and get stuck, and it could be a safety concern. We do try and catch this condition, but to try and make it the regulations more clear, we added a regulation that walls shall be separated by 20 feet. So that means in a situation like this, the wall would either need to be set back by 20 feet, or they can use a shared wall, which is quite common. We also added a regulation that if walls are within 50 feet of each other, there should be some type of view fencing component. This is so that we don't have that alley situation, where you have a 20-foot kind of alley that isn't quite visible. Again, sometimes garbage can collect in those areas, or people can go back there, whereas when you utilize the view fencing, it allows kind of an eyes-on-the-street situation. So again, this regulation would apply citywide. We just included it in this section, because we were opening up the walls and fencing section. I also do want to note that when we sent out notice for this item, we also stated we'd be amending Article Six. I'm going to go over, in the ordinances, we included the amendments to Article Six in the next set of zoning ordinance text amendments, and that was just because we had several amendments to that article, and it was easier to include those amendments in one ordinance, rather than split them between two ordinances. So if there's any members of the public that are listening, wondering where the amendments are to Article Six, we're going to go through those in the next ordinance. That concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have regarding these proposed text amendments.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate the presentation. I think it makes some sense. Is there, are there any questions from any of the commissioners for Katie?
No question.
Katie, hearing no questions. Alyssa, are there any emails or speaker cards regarding this issue?
I've not received any emails or speaker card.
Okay, thank you. With that, then, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I propose that we approve 20-220-00003.
Seconded. It was moved by Commissioner Maloney, seconded by Commissioner Steiner, to approve the zoning ordinance text amendments, Agenda Item Number Five. Is there any discussion?
No.
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 Hearing that, Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Barnes?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that, Alyssa. Onto Agenda Item Number Six, another zoning ordinance amendment continuation, and so Katie, you're up to present, and I will open the public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the commission. So this set of amendments, we're just calling miscellaneous amendments. There are four items we're going to be going through: a zoning protest area calculation, residential driveways, parking garages, and then adding a new MF-12 zoning district. The public notice did say we were going to amend mobile vending regulations, and that portion of the amendments has been delayed. We needed additional time to work on that. So if anybody's listening and is interested in those regulations, we will bring those to you at a future commission date. These amendments impact four different articles listed here, Article One, Two, Three, and The first is the zoning protest area calculation. A few years ago, the state passed a law changing how we're to calculate the zoning protest area, and so this is just to bring our zoning ordinance in conformance with state statute. What the zoning protest area is, is it tells us when a supermajority vote of council is triggered. If a certain number of people surrounding a zoning area provide written objections, then that means that a two-thirds vote of the city council is required to pass the ordinance, or a six-to-one vote of city councils required to approve the ordinance. Previously, 20% of one side of a zoning area was required, so 20% of this area or this area, any side, was required to trigger zoning protest. People approached the state about amending that, because if a parcel was odd-shaped, it was confusing as what is a side, as this example. Is this a side, or is this whole thing a side? It also meant that in some cases, one property owner could trigger a supermajority vote. So what they did is they changed the definition of zoning protest area. So if this area in white was the area being rezoned, then 150 feet from that line is the zoning protest area. What's interesting is it includes the area being rezoned as well. So 20% of the property owners within what's defined as the zoning protest area must provide written objection to trigger that supermajority vote. Again, this is simply bringing our ordinance in compliance with state law. Next is regulations to our residential driveway requirements. Basically, it was discovered that there was a lack of clarity between a driveway, a parking area, and a patio. This amendment attempts to provide that clarity, and as you can see from this example, here's an instance where somebody has paved almost their entire front yard. This can cause a concern to the city, because it can impact drainage to the area, plus it makes it confusing where parking can occur, as well as the aesthetics. What we're doing is amending Article Six to say that paved areas contiguous to a driveway that are over 100 square feet will also be considered part of the driveway when we're determining driveway width. Already in the ordinance is a requirement that 50% of a lot width can be a driveway or 30 feet. And what we're doing is closing the loophole, that if you start to pave an area adjacent to your driveway, we're going to count that as driveway area, too. What that has the impact of is that about 50% of your front yard must be unpaved. What we also did was, there was one regulation in the zoning ordinance that required driveways be set back three feet from the side property line. There are many driveways in Goodyear that have broken this rule, this regulation have been built, so they're in non-conforming status. Since we're closing the loophole where you cannot pave the whole front yard, it did make sense that we could remove that three-feet requirement. So now you could possibly pave all the way to your side property line, but there isn't as much concern with drainage in that area, because there should be plenty of area in your front yard for proper drainage. The next item are parking structures. We are currently working on the plans for City Hall, and one of the structures going in there is a parking garage, and as we just started planning and discussing this, we realized that there are unique needs for regulations with regards to parking structures, and we did not have any in our zoning ordinance. What we did was, we looked at other cities, such as Phoenix, where parking garages are common, and used many of their regulations, so that we could create space and aisle dimensions regulations that made sense, met fire codes, and also provided the, you know, adequate parking space that we would need for parking garages. It also sets special design guidelines for these parking structures. Finally, per direction from City Council, we are adding an MF-12 zoning district. This is what we, to accommodate those developments that we commonly call single-family rentals, as the Hancock Project you saw earlier tonight. They would have a max density of 12 dwelling units per acre. For the residents, they'd have a maximum height of 25 feet. However, accessory buildings, such as a clubhouse, would have a maximum height of 12 feet, or these often have carports or garages. Today, you are just approving the development standards, so density, height setbacks. We are going to amend the design guidelines, and that is forthcoming. The design guidelines will address elevations and style, colors, materials that you can use that pertain to these districts. We also made a change to the MF-18 and MF-24 district. There's an old concept in the rear setback. Rather than giving a direct feet, the rear setback in MF-18 and MF-24 is 20% of lot depth. This has caused a lot of problems for multifamily developments, because, as you can imagine, for a large garden-style apartment community, it could have a lot depth of 200 feet, which would mean a 40-foot setback, or it could have a lot depth of 500 feet. And so many of our apartment complexes were creating PEDs just to get around this regulation. So we've created a rear setback of 30 feet. Also, we included separations from single-family. So if the height of the building is under 20 feet, it's a 30-foot rear setback. If the height of a building is 20 to 30 feet, then that rear setback must increase to 50 feet. And if the height of the building is over 30 feet, then you have to add an additional five feet for every foot of height. So a 40-foot tall building would be set 100 feet back from the property line of a single-family residential. These setbacks mirror our C-2 regulations. In commercial districts, buildings have to be set back from single-family residential those same distances, 30 feet, or it increases depending on the height of the building. So that would make those multifamily districts similar to our commercial district regulations in terms of setbacks. So I know that was a variety of regulations, but that does conclude my presentation on this, and I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Katie. The staff put a lot of work into this and trying to find some solutions. Appreciate your effort, and I will turn it over to any commissioners that may have questions. No questions?
No questions.
No.
Then you guys will let me be up easy. All right. Alyssa, do we have any comment cards or emails?
No emails or speaker cards have been received.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I back up with a question?
Yes, please. Is that Commissioner Ellison?
Three and four together or separately?
I should say I didn't. Five and six.
I believe that's Vice Chairman Barnes asking if we are voting on both items together. I believe you were cut off on the last one, but, and it's kind of hard to hear you.
Commissioner Barnes, the fact is, is we voted on Agenda Item Number Five already, and that passed, presented by staff, and now this vote will be on all the amendments that Katie has presented to us in the last few minutes.
Okay, that must have been when I lost signal. All right, that was my only question.
Okay, thank you. Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion on Agenda Item Number Six, on the amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I vote that we approve 20-220-00004, the zoning ordinance text amendments.
I second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Maloney, I believe it was seconded by Commissioner Clymer, to approve Agenda Item Number Six, zoning ordinance text amendments, as presented by the staff. Is there any discussion from any of the commission members?
No.
Madam Secretary, hearing now, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner? You're on mute. Commissioner Steiner?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Kish?
Aye.
Commissioner Clymer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ellison?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Barnes?
Aye.
Chairman Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you for that, Alyssa. Onto Agenda Item Number Six, another zoning ordinance amendment continuation, and so Katie, you're up to present, and I will open the public hearing.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the commission.
If you'll just give me a moment, I'm going to pull up the presentation. You should all be able to see the screen, can you?
Yeah.
I heard a yes, so I'll roll with that. So, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chairman and commission members. At the conclusion of last month's Planning Commission meeting, Chairman Bray asked if the commission could get an update on the activity levels that we're seeing in the Development Services Department. And so it's my pleasure to give you this brief presentation tonight, just to kind of update you on what we're experiencing currently as compared to what we have experienced previously. And just as a reminder, when we're talking about Development Services, we're not only talking about Katie's team in planning and zoning, but we're also, within our wheelhouse, if you will, we have Building Safety, and the two divisions under Building Safety, which is Building Safety Plan Review and Building Safety Inspections. Additionally, housed within our department are colleagues in code compliance. So this first graph tonight shows a month-by-month comparison of the number of building inspections that the team performs. As you can tell, and I'll move my mouse here, there's these different lines that represent the different years, and it has significantly increased from 2018 through 2020. In fact, it's close to a 49% increase in the total number of inspections to date. The inspection demands are purely a result of the numbers of permits issued. And just as a reminder, for every single-family residential home that we permit, there are 13 trips and 13 inspections made to that individual construction site in order to perform inspection. So if you look at these numbers, when we get to the single-family residential and times it by 13, you can actually see the actual volume of work, and that's how we get to these very high 700, 800 or so inspection numbers. So as I mentioned, inspections are purely a result of permits issued. Let's first talk about single-family permits, and this goes back through 2016. As you can tell, there has been a nice progression and growth in the amount of single-family permits that have been issued. These are new single-family homes within the city of Goodyear. This is a very healthy trend. There's not a whole lot of significant spikes or drops. We don't go up to 3,000 and down to 800 or anything of that nature. This is a very healthy growth. This is the number through the end of May, 599 in 2020 so far. I'm pleased to inform you that we just got the reports for the month of June, and it was a banner month for the city. We issued 204 new single-family permits just in the month of June. So if we extrapolate that out for the rest of the 2020 calendar year, that means that we would expect to issue somewhere close to 1,600 new single-family homes in calendar year 2020. Again, we're really pleased with this kind of rate and projection of growth, very, very healthy growth, not these significant spikes and drops. One of the other largest sectors of the development world that we spend a bunch of time in and have a lot of service delivery in is the commercial and industrial, especially the industrial side. For the last several years, industrial has really picked up a lot of momentum in the city of Goodyear. And just as a reminder, industrial includes both manufacturing, like maybe Sub-Zero, distribution, logistics, and also data centers, that, as we have five in the city of Goodyear, several of which are under construction now, and several are going through the approval, excuse me, the approval process. Through May of 2020, we have permitted more than 5.7 million square feet of industrial space in just this year alone. So that is a pretty significant increase since 2018, and as we've gained, as I mentioned, a whole lot of momentum in the industrial marketplace. We also track the types of submissions that are made to the department as a whole. And so, because this helps us have a much broader perspective of the volume that we're currently experiencing, and also what we can predict in the future. And as you can tell, this is all types of different plan submissions, so this includes planning cases and things of that nature. And so you can tell here that we're really very, very similar, little bit of a dip, but not much, because we still have a lot of activity to go through the rest of this particular year. Again, this is very steady, very healthy. We don't see these incredible spikes up to 400 or 500 planned submittals and then dropping down. Very healthy, very steady, and that's something that we're very pleased about. Projects also go through multiple review cycles before coming to the commission for recommendation to the council, and even before permitting. So again, we try and track the number of cases that are submitted on the first review, meaning these are brand-new cases that have been submitted to the city. And again, you'll see, I'll probably sound a little bit like a broken record, but we have a very healthy, steady approach here, not significant pickup and not significant reductions either. So this is very healthy, and we're very pleased about this. The one thing that can be a little bit misleading about this particular chart is, for example, with final plats, we may get several final plats, and they could be, they could range in size and scope. A final plat could include maybe 40 lots, or it may include 150 or include several hundred lots, that then put those lots into inventory in order to be eligible for the building permits for a single-family home. So this is just talking about the types of cases, or the numbers of cases, not necessarily the scope and the complexity of the cases. For Katie's team on the planning and zoning side of the house, again, this is through May, and we track and break down the different types of applications that are made. So site plans are ministerial, they come just to staff, final plats just go to council. You all hear and recommend preliminary plat approvals, use permits like tonight, rezonings, PADs, general plan amendments. You'll remember back before Mr. Schmidt's retired, we had a couple of general plan amendments with him. MLD, minor land divisions, these are staff-approved. So it helps us to understand the distribution of the work and the volume of work that actually has to be processed and worked with in order for the council to ultimately hear and decide and vote on it. That also has to go through you. So this is also a powerful tool to help us understand our workload, our hours, and also the distribution of types of cases that we're working on. A leading indicator of future activity in Goodyear are our pre-application meetings and our due diligence meetings. So these are services that we offer to the development community and also frankly to residents as well. If they are desiring to do a project, we're happy to meet with individuals and design teams and developers and engineers and so on and so forth, in order to set them on the path to success. What process needs to take place? Are there any particular challenges with the set of, with a given parcel of property with regard to infrastructure? Is it subject to a development agreement or cost recovery? Many of these things are all ferreted out and identified in these pre-app and due diligence meetings. But most importantly, they're a leading indicator of the future activity, because before you submit a rezoning case or a preliminary plat, we need to have and conduct, actually the ordinance requires that we conduct a pre-application meeting. So this is an indicator of levels of future activity. And as you can tell, again, my broken record, we have a very healthy growth here and are very steady. There's none of this, again, spike of activity and drop of activity, very healthy, very steady, and we're very pleased about that. So in short, Mr. Chairman and Commission, the 2020 continues to be a busy year for us. In spite of the nationwide news that we all hear and are subject to, Goodyear continues to move forward quite strongly. And based on all of our leading indicators, as I've just mentioned, we expect that to continue. We are very, very fortunate in Goodyear to have earned the confidence of the marketplace, as evidenced by the 5.7 million square feet of industrial space just this year alone. It has, this has been hard-earned because of the work of the council and also volunteers like yourself that helped put us in this enviable position. And it is also very much a reflection of the strong leadership from Katie and her team in order to help applicants through the process, be innovative, roll out new plan review systems and things of this nature, in order not only to have ourselves more efficient, but to continue to deliver exceptional customer service. So again, we're very fortunate to have the leadership that we have in this city, and as evidenced by Katie and her team, and we really look forward to the rest of 2020, and the future in Goodyear is very, very bright, and we're pleased to be part of it. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll conclude my comments and stand for any questions that you or anybody else may have.
Chris, thank you for taking the time to put that information together. It is good to see, I think it's good for us to see kind of where we're at. I couldn't agree more with your statements, not only Katie's team, but under your leadership as well. Commend the staff for, you know, taking those necessary steps to streamline processes and also be good at customer service. I think because we were ahead of that curve, keeping the rewards now as a city, and I think, yeah, all the staff should be very proud of their accomplishments. With that, are there any questions from any of the commissioners for Chris on what he has presented?
No questions.
No, but thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Absolutely. Commissioner Kitch?
Yeah, I echo all of Chairman Bray's statements about how wonderful and how hard-working everything. That was an excellent presentation. You said multiple times that there were no spikes in areas except the industrial zoning. Does the city council and Planning and Zoning Commission have like a point in which you look at, wow, we have this many miles of industrial zoning, should we taper off, or is there a kind of like a peak or a, I don't know, some way of tracking when that becomes too much? That was the only area that spiked considerably. I didn't know if that was something that should be looked at or alarmed because of...
Sure. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, thank you for the question. So most of that industrial development takes place on property that's already zoned industrial. So those, the previous decisions have kind of set that in motion, and it's really just utilizing that available land for industrial-type development. But to your point, we do, and Katie and the team, we do keep track, not on a monthly basis or anything of that nature, but especially when we do the, like, update to general plan, begin to understand how much available land is given for every type of different land use, so that we can continue to have a broad mixture of employment, retail, commercial, office, and things of that nature. Because frankly, the best communities are the most diverse communities, so all of our eggs aren't in one basket. But we are generally very pleased with the amount of industrial development in the community, especially with the high investment of those particular projects, because they invest hundreds of millions, millions of dollars into the community that is then helps increase our tax rolls. So from that, and they're also employment generators as well. Of course, varying degrees of employment, logistics and distribution have lower employment wages. The data centers have less employees, but super-high skills and super-high payrolls associated with it. So again, we're really seeking to diversify the local economy, and we are keeping track of the amount of available zoned property for development. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from any of the commissioners?
Nope.
Nope.
All right. Well, again, thank you, Chris, a very nice presentation. We'll just move on to staff communication.
Mr. Chairman, this is a point in the meeting where I typically give you the report of what council action was, and I have to confess that I didn't have an opportunity to dig all that out, so please bear with me, it's been a long week, all right?
Yeah, I have to put the good presentation, all the kudos, and now...
I have to thank Alyssa for the presentation. She did, she did most of the research and so forth. I just put some nice words to it.
Thank you, guys. Totally understandable, no worries. We're all living in a different era at this moment and trying to figure out what's going on, so not a problem. Are there any other questions or comments from the commissioners? We're going to wrap this up.
No comments, no questions.
No questions.
All right. With that, the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be held on August 12, 2020, at 6:00 PM. There being no further business to discuss, this meeting is adjourned.